And to reiterate for which is stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thanks for having me here. We are planning a it's time again to do a strategic planning session for the hospital. And I sent out, I don't know if it's made around to you guys yet or not. A survey that we've asked members in the community to fill out and complete at that time. It's pretty short, it's pretty simple, but it asks for thoughts about needs. That people in the community may see that we're not providing that we could or could be useful, so. If you guys get that, feel free to fill it out and send it on to somebody else that you're thinking about and maybe beneficial to do. Also, if there's any pertinent community members that you feel like may be appropriate to join us in our strategic planning session, I'd be all ears for that. It could be helpful by just getting kind of an outside perspective, you know, make sure that we've got some some clean eyes on everything. The other thing I wanted to really share, talk about, we had our EMS meeting. And discussed a lot of things and we do have a quote for a ventilator. But Dan was gonna look at one of our current ones and see how it if we could make it fit. In the ambulance appropriately first, if we could kind of work through that. And I don't know if he's completed that yet or not, but I'm sure he's on top of it. Another thing we discussed is both providers, our providers, so physicians or PAs. And nurses also being able to go in the back of the ambulance and they're all willing to and. Mickey created Mickey and Dan both created a checklist of items. So what we're thinking is we're actually gonna do an annual training. To make sure that nurses and providers are familiar with the back of the ambulance, where supplies are located, those kinds of things, but also. A per incident checklist, right, so if there's a transfer that one of our staff members has to go on. They'll sit down with the EMT that's more familiar with the ambulance and run through this checklist real quick to make sure that everything's order, so we have kind of a two-tiered approach of. Of an annual training and the per incident training. And then we'll keep track of that, so we'll have a list of that, Mickey will have a list of that. In EMS of what nurses and providers have gone through that and. We're kind of comfortable with them going on these ambulance transfers when they come up fortunately, as we discussed before, those are. The few and far in between cases, but I've been really impressed with our providers really being willing to. Say, yeah, we'll get in the back of the ambulance, other things we're checking with regards to those are. Where liability sits for that, if that would fall under ambulance liability or if they're running on the clock in the hospital, if that fall under our. Malpractice insurance or where that would fall to make sure that we have the coverage that we need and we don't have any issues there. Also, Michelle's working on scheduling additional training with Eagle Med still. And so that'll probably happen sometime in April, I think it's anticipated date, but I know Mickey also said that. They've got several EMT advanced that are looking to be finished in June, so expanding. Their services as well and their capabilities to provide more high quality care. In the back of the ambulance is important, so I just want to make sure you guys know we're taking this situation seriously. And we're working and and correcting things in a very collaborative manner. So I'm very encouraged by the process that we've taken. And Dr. Atkins put it perfect, he said it's it's easy to fix something when everybody has the same goal in mind and and is really motivated to do it. And I think that's the team we've got, so we're taking that very, very seriously. And we're gonna meet again, I mean, we're we're making a kind of a regular meeting as we work through this, so towards the end of April, we're gonna be meeting again. And following up with some assignments that were made and getting through it. And that's really what's going on, we're also talking, starting to think about ribbon cutting ceremony for the clinic, anticipating it being open in June. So when that comes, we'll try to get invites out to the community and invite everybody out and celebrate that with us and have a good time and be able to kind of see the clinic and. So I want to make you aware of that. Do you have any questions for me or any concerns or anything that that should be one of those?
Glad you're on it.
Okay.
Sounds good, yes.
Okay, thank you guys, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Have a good one.
All right, just wanna go over some new business.
Okay, I have an agreement between Sheridan Graham and Goat Counties and Hirsch and Abbott Law Office. Treat our a secretary position, you guys can review this and sign, that would be great.
Do we have a motion on that?
Yes.
I saw blue.
Second.
Then I have the final job description of the J A T. You guys can sign those.
Okay. And all the department heads into this room. Turn this, so you're perfect.
And center on the couch.
Hey.
What did you hear?
I didn't hear. All right, Nan, you're up.
Hey. Oh, well, some highlights from from last week. This is with Carrie Dowdell and everybody knows now that Earl Ladiette are looking to sell average Joe's and be closing due to health issues. They do have another business in mind, but that'll be down the road. I got her in touch with both the SBDC and. Lynn Klein with Danny. Get a a good business valuation so they know what the business is actually worth in terms of selling it. Also reached out to. Doug Williams and Hayes, he works with the the Prophet Brothers who are known for buying and selling restaurants. So that may be an opportunity as well. Agritourism Conference was fantastic, seven seventy attendees. The disappointment was. Carl and I were the only ones from Western Kansas in attendance, along with Lisa Goodheart from Jewel County. I figured there'd be more there from Western Kansas, a great conference though. We've made copies for the Travel and Tourism Committee of everything that was there. As far as the sessions, including gold standard customer service, best practices. Content creation, AI session was amazing, I've not messed with that much, but. It's called Chat Chat GPT is one of them that you familiar with, Jared?
Uh, somewhat, yeah, I've never even messed with it, but I'm gonna I'm gonna look into it even more, it's. Fascinating to me what it's able to do in terms of documents and. They gave the example, there was a winery there that they ran through the program. Basically for the purpose of checking on their pricing versus other wineries in Kansas. And. The information they entered again, you know, it's it's junk in junk out, so the more information you enter in that type of program. The better information comes out, but in six minutes, it generated a thirty-two page report for them. As well as comparisons and pricing suggested that they they look at a. A lower priced product from their winery to compete with some of the lower price lines from others in Kansas. I just sat there thinking thirty-two pages, how many hours of research would it have taken? Me to to find all that and print it out in six minutes, it was it was fascinating. We also gave out forty of the Explore Graham County brochures and forty ultimate guides there. I didn't know if they'd take them all, but sure enough, we had took forty-five and we had five of each left. So we got that information out to a lot of folks, like I say, from Eastern Kansas looking at that information. So maybe we'll pick up some travelers from that. Creta meeting, the big thing there is is the legislature is looking at all kinds of cuts. They have a rural opportunity zone two point oh proposal, but it's also on the chopping block. Along with the peak at H P programs. So we'll see what happens, I don't know that it'll get out of committee because they're so focused on property tax relief that. I don't know if a lot of the cuts will get out of committee, but we'll we'll wait and see. The Professional Development Committee, which I serve on with Roger Raby. From Brooks County, we're working on a survey of members as far as inputs and needs for both personal and professional development. As well as a a resource guide, which I think will be a a great tool for. My successor and for a lot of the new A D directors as far as having all that information in one place. Contacts and information on programs and so on. Visiting with Kelly Hansen and Carrie Valetti of the Office of Rural Prosperity, which we've worked with quite a bit. They've got a new community assessment tool, which I put information in the newsletter. On that might be something to look at down the road as well. And this is Ron Wilson, the Hook Boyd Foundation. For rural development and learned at a breakfast with the Supreme Court justices in Phillipsburg on April thirtieth. So if you have any interest in that, that'll be in the newsletter as well as a grant writing workshop, the K State Extension Nancy Daniels is doing here in Hill City. On May seventh, I think that would be of interest for for several people. Attended the Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge at Hill City High School. Fantastic. Display that I've done. More than a dozen judging of of Y E C competitions throughout the region. And I'm here to tell you, out of the seven, six of the trade show booths were amazing. Better than I've seen. In a lot of competitions. Alexander Hamel won first place, seven hundred fifty dollars for A one extreme services, which is mowing, landscaping. Tree trimming, all kinds of things. Seamless Shield Gutters, Sarah Christian won second place for five hundred. And third place, Tatum Mitzner, Little T's Talos. Using tallow to for. Various hand creams and and so on and so forth, she's actually already selling her products, so she also won the. Ready to launch award. Mock nine racing. Won the People's Choice Award that we sponsored, that was people going through, including students. He's got a great idea and I gave him my card and said, if I can help with a business plan, I'd be glad to. Remote control car racing with a with a portable track. And he's looking at going to various county fairs and other events. Charge, I think he said, three bucks for five minutes. So you can race the remote controlled car around around the track that they've got. And he's already got the trailer, his dad's got the trailer holding around, neat business idea. Oh, I'm gonna pick up the Leadership Graham County plaque, we've got it updated and also had a call from. Travel brochure distribution, they're running short on our traveling. Explore Graham County brochure, so I've ordered another two thousand of those and gonna pick those up when they're ready. From Northwestern printers and I'll get them to him, that's a good sign that in the last year, we put out two thousand brochures and they're running short. So they're getting picked up, I think that the key is the bright red standout brochure rack. And it's cause right at the top sticking out Explore Graham County, so that's good. I know some of our efforts are working, whether it's the brochures, the billboard. Because in visiting with Cassie Transtadter at the Nicodemus Visitor Center. They've gone from two years ago, a number of visitors of thirty-two hundred to. Two thousand twenty-three was. Almost five thousand and. Two thousand twenty-four was seventy-nine hundred. And and we're waiting to see continued increase. Showed those numbers to Roger Raby and he thanked me because he knows that people are coming through Stockton to go to Nicodemus and people are coming through instead to go to Nicodemus as well. Several committee meetings this week that I'll report back on. One other thing, I've got through Network Kansas, they have an option for automated other authorization for automated payment. And I know from my time in the credit card industry, it's illegal to debit government accounts. And I say that because when we did that, we had to send a bill when when like Treasurer's Office would accept Discover Card for. Tax payments or property tax or vehicle registration, they charged an additional. Transaction fee and then we had to bill them for that to be sent, do you know if that's the case? And the reason I ask is the funds we get from Network Kansas go to various various grant funds. Y E C funds, which has their own account and business development and technical assistance funds. So I'm a little hesitant to do automated payment, it speeds it up, but. That way we get a check, we get a check directly from Network Kansas for whatever it is, we put it into appropriate account where it's gonna go. But I wanted to check with you guys, because I don't I I see it being more hassle than waiting an additional three or four days for a paper check. And I've got copies I've got from the. Creta conference for you guys. Started out terrible morning, spilled my coffee on my pants. Got breakfast on my shirt. It happens. Yeah, this is a K State one oh five program, we'll check what we got. Annual reports and then I got you each a grants guide from Department of Commerce. I got a little early.
Do you?
Okay, good.
Good.
How's breathing today?
Good, how about you?
Tired, I can't seem to get up, I'm getting tired. And questions on any anything else?
I don't have anything.
Anything right now, no. Okay.
We did hire. Going to, I guess, today.
Start date?
So the plan is anyway.
Is that Jason? Okay. I've been working, still finishing up kind of a a transition plan as far as training and going through everything.
Yeah, we need to. We need to prove it first, yeah, I'll do that, some new business here.
Okay. That's all I've got. Anxious to hear what's, this is Jack Creek, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any more new business, we want to go over right now, Krista.
New business?
Yes, I'm gonna wait for the couple of minutes.
Yeah, discussion with the Community Development Director position.
I'll make the motion to hire Jason Ludenville.
I'll second.
House official. And the start date of twenty-fourth, Monday? I crammed a lot of things on a daily basis to go over, so hopefully. I want to make sure he's comfortable, but. Twenty-fourth, okay?
Next Monday.
And you got his his number by chance?
I think it's on his. Should know his app, but I'm his.
I'm sure it's in the office, we we get a tea later.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll give him a call and and set up the timeframe, I think, as I was saying, I think I could get. I've crammed enough in and then allowed for carryover from day to day as far as going through everything. As long as he's comfortable getting up to snuff at the end of the paper, which is April fifteenth, right?
Yes.
Fifteenth, okay. So we'll see where we're at in the next couple of weeks and and kind of plan on that then.
I love it.
Just three dollars today.
Good. They still haven't gotten a bill?
Uh-uh, I was gonna talk to them about that.
That's crazy.
Did you already get the minutes?
Yes, uh.
Need to approve the max?
One second. Want a copy of that?
Sure.
Okay, Karina, you're up.
Okay. I think I got a mention to you guys concerning your C. I think I got a mention to you guys concerning your C V R project that. Um, Jack Creek salvage had applied and since they weren't part of the original group. I had to uh. Redo the environmental review. And that is now complete. And we have written approval. Uh, I sent Kendra a copy of the environmental review for the file and the approval today. Um, some of the things that Jack Creek salvage are wanting are real easy things um that we can procure. You just need to get two or three written quotes. Small purchases and you guys can approve it, but some of the things that they're needing, you can see the. Refrigerator and freezer are still forthcoming, we're still working on getting those quotes, I'll probably come back hopefully next Tuesday, if that's okay. But the wood stoves are a little more complicated, they've already at their own expense did an asbestos inspection. And then there's three quotes that we have to get, one for the, which they have, one for the bottom of the stove, one for the physical stove. And the installation of the stove, that triggers state with spake in wages, so I'm checking with the state exactly how to put that bid packet together. We only have until the end of May to get this whole project done, so. Probably cutting it close, but. Um, so today I have for you guys the quote summary for the generator. Picnic tables and metal shelving. And I've already gotten all of this, you know, the items in general as far as eligibility pre-approved with the state, so. Um, we've got two bids for the generator, the low bid would be Hill City Auto. Feed and supply for eight thousand one dollars and eighty-eight cents, it's highlighted. The picnic tables, um. Usually you look at things individually, but if you can get them in groups and get. Two quotes in groups, that works too, so um one bits from Zoro, one's from Global, Zoro is the low uh. Would be the low quote at forty-six hundred seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents. And on the shelving, we've got Global Industrial and Zoro with Global Industrial. Um. And when they order these, they, you know, since a little bit of time has elapsed since I did the environmental review on the bigger things, I've, you know, we got more recent quotes, but. Um, if it's a few dollars under fine, if it's a few dollars over fine, you know, uh, because. This hasn't happened super quickly, you know, that's fine too. Um, and what I gave you guys earlier. Is, you know, a balance sheet showing all three projects that we've done to date and how much money is left. Um. So I think the plan was just to get this last business done and close out the grant. So what I would need today is a motion to award. For Jack Creek salvage, the generator to Hill City Auto Feed and Supply for eight thousand one dollars and eighty-eight cents, the the. Um, six picnic tables to Zoro. Or four thousand six hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-four cents and the um. Four shelving units to Global Industrial for one thousand ninety-five dollars and twenty-three cents.
Make a mention of pre-able. First. I'll say.
Thank you, I will go ahead and issue them an award email today, so to go ahead and order these things. And um, get them in as soon as possible and as a reminder, they have to physically have the items here and a paid receipt to give to me and then I come request the money.
Does anything matter like with average year selling?
That was next on my list, so historically what has happened in the past, we had a project, a similar project um. In Gove County and the restaurant went under after the project was closed out. And you know, they they just said, you know, you did your best. Try to keep that business open, I've never had one closed while the project is still open. So I did send an email and Tim was gonna talk about it at staff meeting, but the. Uh, um, the two people that his boss Andrew and Ann. Were, they're in Washington right now, so they're gonna have to talk about it at their next. Meet staff meeting. Um, one thing I do wanna point out and I talked to Carrie about this, the handheld units you see highlighted, she's ordered them, received them. Has asked for invoices over and over and they just haven't given them to her, so she can pay for it. And she's she's called, emailed everything and. I know she did say if worse comes to worse, she would just pay for them, um, but that is something I just wanted you guys to be aware of.
She's waited how long?
She's been trying for a long time to get them to send her an invoice so she can pay for it. Now, another reminder, I can only um, request three thousand dollars, the minimum amount of C D B G funds I can request at any one time is. Three thousand dollars, so. Um. Hopefully we can time this, I did talk to Jack Creek about that, hopefully they can do it just all at once, so. We don't have one little straggler thing that has to wait till it close out, that would be terrible, or you guys prepaid and be reimbursed, that kind of thing, so. Um, do you guys have any other questions?
No.
Okay.
Certainly no.
Okay, I hate to give back any money, but you see how long it took to do the environmental review and. And process and application, I just don't think there's.
How much are we looking at?
Um, so so they, Jack Creek has a balance, assuming that everything comes in at exactly what, you know, the quote is. Um, sixteen thousand two hundred and thirty dollars and ninety-five cents, so that. The freezer and refrigerator will come out of that and the stoves, it'll probably go over, if it does, that would be at their expense then and.
So with those, we wouldn't be returning any of the funds?
We would still be returning um. Um.
About forty thousand.
Um, no, not forty, so um. Um, let me see. So obligated is after today, um, it's hard to know because uh, assuming we spend the full thirty, it would be ten thousand nine and three. And I think I did mention to you guys, we do not have to file the U C Cs anymore on any loose equipment, so that's one less thing to worry about, very thankful for. And so you'll just need a copy of this for your files and then um, I will have you guys sign the uh. Forgive me, which one of you is chairman, is that you, okay, if you don't mind, I'll have you sign this and then one for your files also. Just that it was. I'll look at the paperwork before the state ever comes out and make sure you get the originals. Alright, thank you very much.
I gotta say, it's amazing. Between the C V R grant. And the two picture porch programs. It's tough to give away money in Graham County.
You're giving away, they're turning around and selling it.
Thanks. Hold on, Karina.
Okay, did you, uh, where's the copy for us?
Oh, did you, I was just.
This one?
That one, the one that's in that packet, yeah, that's just for FYI, but it's a biz. So you should have gotten them, uh, they should have. Okay, so if you just wanna have him sign another, if not, I'll give you this one, I. So sure, thank you. Sounds good, thank you.
Big fizz if you go in here.
Oh, okay.
If we get to it, that'd be great, just remember what I said about it.
At the at the meeting when you talked to me about it, what I thought would be, why I thought it would be good. Finally.
Oh, yeah. Yes, then you're gonna do the correct shirts.
There you go.
Are you as well with the doctors yet or?
Yes, yes. You want us on?
Yeah, I'm a little kind of.
Okay.
Why not start a little few days?
Yeah, you are, my pleasure. Appreciate it, absolutely. Oh, you weren't done, I'm sorry. Well, save them money this month, save them money.
Thanks for that, thank you guys.
Wayne.
Hey Wayne, you're up buddy.
There you go, there she is. What's up?
Hello, buddy.
Yeah. I got one, two, three. Three guys printed, they're discin', but basically discin' now.
Smoothing back down.
What's that?
Smoothing comes back down.
Well, you can't lay it all out, cause you got a big windrow, but it. It chops it up toward the winter, it's about half the size of. Lucas and. Cody and Alan are out here, we hold some on this hump. On the river. That was always real narrow, so last week we held a bunch of dirt on it, widened it out. Then they're they're mixing shale and saying. They're laying it right now. Just that over that hump. Let's see what else. That's about it. Going down, put a cattle gar, or clean out a cattle gar down in St. Peter. Mile west and a half mile south. So.
Hopefully get some moisture, right?
Yeah.
Get some graded up.
Yep. Tonight. That's about all we got going on right now.
Haven't heard nothing back on the gears or. The quotes?
Yeah, I told them to give me some. I've heard nothing. I think. I think that's all we got going on right now. Pretty quiet. I thought the wind just blew out the south today.
Later on.
Thanks, Michael.
See you. And then it's gonna flip into the north.
Yeah, sixty mile an hour winds, I think. Two hundred inches of snow.
Mike said his phone showed that we could get up to an inch of moisture. But. And it didn't really say that on Wichita this morning. So.
This will be amazing. Cause it's not one of the, even if it snows, it's not gonna stay.
No, it'll blow away.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what they said, but you know, I had to remind some of the guys this morning about ten storms back in eighty-seven. That was March twenty-third, this is only March eighteenth.
We definitely don't need nothing like that.
There was maybe forty, forty-four inches of snow. And the wind blew about sixty-five mile an hour.
It blew everything.
Yeah, we don't need that. Nash my garden's here, helicopters and all that.
Yeah. Well, in my lifetime, I've never seen any cuts on the highway over by Pinocchio, they were level four snow, clear crossing. So.
Yeah, this show is just. A little bit of snow, not much at all now.
Maybe we're not even gonna get in there. Any complaints?
Just the roads over there at the hop, so it'll be narrow and stuff.
Well, that day you called me and you had called. Said that it was rough, I think that it was right after he had pulled it up, cause I went right over there after you called man. I didn't see nothing wrong. I didn't see nothing wrong with it other than it was maybe a little bit rough by the windrow. And I told him to just deadhead down it and kind of pack it in a little bit. Even then it wouldn't, to me it wasn't that bad. But I think it must have gone on when it was, right, right when he pulled it up. You have a lot of clumps on the road till you get smoothed up and kicked over.
Yeah, I never made it over there to look, I was told you about it, so.
I made it, I got up there, he was right there by Cleon's corner. It was right at noon and I didn't think it was that bad. But I think if we get some of this disced up, it'd be a little bit better. I keep thinking there was something else I wanted to talk about, I didn't write it down and now I can't remember. Must have been that important.
Don't think about it, we're laying a fence right.
They come back in. Or when I get out to the pickup.
Yeah.
Oh, I know, one thing I was gonna say, Gerald Regal took his fence out, we're gonna cut a bank down. Go down south of St. Peter. So he put the fence back in. So, no, I was gonna start on this afternoon, but I can wait and see what this weather does. I don't wanna have a room half done and it's nobody can get down it. Yeah, so. If we don't get much, I'll probably start on tomorrow or Thursday. Other than that, that's about all I got. I gotta meet with Gable and Gauzling over at the boat burn pit. He's putting in a defense. He says whenever we push the trees in, we keep moving it to the west, I don't know how we can do that, there's a big old dirt bank on the west side, but. I'm gonna meet with him right after I leave here and see. I don't know if you noticed, but I clocked an hour off. So. And I already talked to the eight-horse because it's on their ground. And he said he was okay if we need to move it a little bit forward, at least like ten foot or twenty feet or something, so. That's about it.
Sounds good.
It's kind of handy for us, he thought that was our pit and I said, no. We, we always haul boat, make sure we can haul the trees there, so we don't have to haul them all the way back to the landfill. And then Nicodemus, they let us put Nicodemus trees in there, so. It's kind of handy, so I think the losing. Alrighty.
Alright, thank you.
See ya.
See you Wayne.
See you.
Morning.
We can come on in.
Okay. Hi. Can I just sit anywhere here?
Yeah.
What are you doing? Do you report this or something?
Yeah.
I should have come down here.
It looks good.
Just give us about five minutes.
Okay.
I'll be right with you.
Put him on partial.
Okay Linda.
Oh, okay.
You're up.
I'm up?
You're up.
Okay. I thought I was meeting with Chris. Is that right?
Chris.
This, um, is that head of the rec program?
Ganzel?
He is head of the rec, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, that, yeah.
Uh?
Not, not here now. He'd probably be in his office.
Oh, that's what I thought the whole point was, was to meet with him.
Okay, well.
You'll have to call him and stuff up.
Oh, okay, I was just, okay, okay. Um, I'm not, I can't see that I'm new here in town, I don't even know if what I was gonna talk to him fits here. But I'm gonna find out about the rec program. I'm concerned because I think there's gonna be a lot of cuts. And I'm worried about the senior community because I'm a part of it. And, um, but not just the senior community, but people on Medicaid and food stamps and stuff. And, um, so I was, um, wondering if the rec program could sponsor some things that, you know, the senior community might be interested in.
Yeah, there'd be something to talk to him about, but.
Oh, okay, so that is an appropriate thing for here.
We're in charge of the community center.
Oh, you are, oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, that's been of interest to me too, um, because. Other communities I've been in, they had their own senior centers for the seniors. And I was thinking that, um, maybe seniors would be more interested or, or needed more support in having, uh, feeling comfortable. Meeting or seeing each other or communicating. Uh, we haven't had a senior lunch program in a long time, we, we've had meals, meals. And now we have a good cook, you know, so that's great. Yeah, but my understanding is that, uh, just the space where the, the kitchen is, is the part that's rented, it isn't the space out. Uh, in the community center, is that correct?
You can rent it.
You can rent.
For special events or whatever, birthdays or.
Oh, okay, but if we have, if we have some kind of program for seniors, you know, what's the limits on it?
We have to look into, we have to look at, yeah, we'll look into that, but it's a community center, I mean, yeah, anybody can rent it.
Yeah, but we're already renting it, but it's just for the kitchen, right? What about, you know, having events in the afternoon like bingo or a dance or, um. I don't know, a senior trip? Maybe people would be interested, or women might be interested in having somebody from the League of Women Voters come, because there's a lot of things going on. That might be helpful.
I feel like that's something you'd have to go through with Chris.
That, that's something you'd have to break up, but, you know, would we have to rent the senior center, I mean, the community center to do that? Or could we just use the space, you know, for afternoon activities? Or is it just gonna confine to morning activities? Is it a place that could be home for people? You know, um. You know, it depends on the community, this community hasn't been active, but then there has, ever since COVID, you know, everything's shut, gonna shut down.
That'd be something I have to check on and see. It used to be, you know, seniors would always meet up there every day, but, yeah, everybody stopped doing it, but. I don't see why they can't, yeah, and use for that again. It's just there was no interest in any of that.
Yeah, there wasn't any interest, and I think most of those people died that, you know, that were there, you know. But there are quite a few seniors in this community, I understand there's a quarter of the community are seniors.
Sure, yeah, definitely, yeah. We definitely could utilize it more, but yeah, like I said, get with Chris and, yeah, absolutely, if he would listen to us.
But it's also like a financial thing, I mean, what kind of demands can we make on the, uh, senior, the community center? For senior activities? Can't we make any demands?
That's just something we have to look into, I guess, and I don't think we're charged for four when everybody met up there. They look for graduations and stuff like that. Yeah, they charge for it.
Uh-huh. So, but that means like utility bills, right, you know, extra lights building up, so many things after. Unlock it or block it up.
We, we could do some more checking, I want to get something, an idea of what you wanna do for sure. Yeah, get with Chris and get your, get your plan together, yeah.
Oh, okay.
And we can see what are options.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to know, because, uh.
I think what you're talking about, so in the morning when the lunch is there. They would come in and play cards and stuff before they ate. So nobody can rent it out from six o'clock in the morning until like one. So then I'm thinking, I mean, if that's what you're wanting to do, but anything after one. You guys just did the whole, it has to be paid unless it needs to be discussed, I mean, unless you can get with Chris and you guys come up with a program. And then you guys will need to come discuss more about. How long and all that stuff, because, you're correct with utilities, I mean.
Yeah, I know, um, the senior center in Marquinhos has a bridge group on an afternoon, Thursday afternoon, I think it is. And they have some kind of a card thing, Sunday, uh, Saturday, Friday night. Some kind of open card thing, um. And I, I don't know what else they do, I know the senior center in, um. In Hayes has several activities after lunch every day. And most of those activities are pretty short, uh, but some of them aren't, you know, they also have bridge and, um. Uh, the, the rec program, I, I know has, um. A bridge group, you know, for, not for, not, not a competitive bridge, but just an open bridge thing. And they do some trips and stuff, you know, and they go out for dinner and, and, you know, I don't know if people here would be interested or not.
They might be, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, but that would cost money, right, or, well.
Everything does.
Everything does?
Yeah, it's, that, they're playing cost money.
Everything costs money, I don't know. I don't know anything about the, the rec program here. I know that there's kids playing baseball in summer, but it just, is there?
Soccer and baseball, and they got several things, but, yeah, I guess. Figure something out, get an idea of what you're thinking and get with him and.
Okay.
I don't know, we could maybe do something.
Do something, is, um. Does that get advertised in the paper, how does, how does the, the community find out about, kids register for it and so on?
They send out flyers at school.
Oh, they send out flyers at school. So there isn't something that goes out. It's kind of terrible what's happening with the newspaper, because people don't know what's going on, you know. Yeah, so. If there were senior activities, you know, where people would need to be advised, is there any money for that, things like that, alright?
That's something we'd have to look into also, with whatever plans. Kind of that I came up with, too.
Yeah, so, okay, well.
Just let us know.
But, yeah, I would, I guess I, I started thinking Chris is just in the sports, is, is that correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, they do other things, we just have to, I mean, he can help you get things set up, he's just part of. The generator of that.
Oh, okay.
They do have like art classes for the younger kids, so I mean, maybe if you take it to him to have something for the adults, he can help you get it going.
Oh, okay, so where is his office? For kids in office?
Do you know where the Catholic building is, the Catholic church?
Yeah.
Right across the street in the south.
Where that thing is?
Tower?
Yeah, the, no, you'll go down one more.
Little police department.
It's the old police department.
Oh, old police department. Is he there every day or?
I have his phone number for you, if you'd like that.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. Is there? So, um, as far as activities, you know, like in the afternoon or something, I, I, you know, maybe people. If they come, well, first of all, it's getting them to come, but if. You, you, you have to vote on it or something, the money or what, are you having money or?
It just has to be approved.
It has to be approved by who?
It depends on which entity's doing it, but if it's through the county, it doesn't through us.
Oh, okay, so.
Just to city, it doesn't through them, or however, however it's set up, or however we wanna proceed.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I've been in different communities, I was in Fort Collins, and I think. In Fort Collins, they just didn't have the money to, or maybe weren't spending the money. For the senior lunch program, except for people that were homebound, and then they could come to eat lunch at the, at the senior center if they were homebound. Which is strange, so that was it, it was limited to people that had mobility problems. So, not very many people showed up for lunch, but that's, that's how they decided to spend their money. So. So if you guys decided, you know, let's spend a little money doing this or that, you know, then somebody else still can. They say that, right?
Yeah, we'll, we'll try to figure something out, I'm sure.
Oh, okay, alright, well, thank you for meeting with me.
Absolutely, thanks for coming in.
I hope we can do something. Alright, takes a while.
Alright. Kristen, you got any other business?
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'll move to a turn.
I'll second.